Start off with the approval of the agenda presentation.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Approval is from December 2nd, 2024, regular meeting on December 2nd and 3rd, 2024, special sessions.
I'll make a motion to approve them. And Chris, did you need that name for that guy that was here on the, for the sheriff and about his radio systems and stuff?
I guess your minutes, do you want that in there or?
I was gonna say if you needed that name, I could get it for you.
Do you want it in your minutes?
I would think it'd be good if we had it in there. And I was gonna try and get, get hold of Fuzzy. I see you was in the office. I never got him stopped soon enough this morning to ask him if he knew that guy's name. But I like to add that guy's name to that. They just gotta get checked on and passed to the future.
Nice, second. I did. Well, second.
With, with the addition.
With the addition and it's, there's a name for that part of the equals.
So we got a first and a second, um, in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Approved employee can claim spelled with the county either in the amount of $179.90.
Motion to approve, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carry, approve sheriff's office monthly weapon permit report, $445.
So moved, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries approved monthly report for recorder's office in the amount of $12,102.73.
Both through, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries approved monthly employee health insurance report.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
How, second?
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Place on file the following manure management plans. Much more Slime LLC, Homer Township, Section 7, WB Farms Incorporated, Section 27, Fairbank Township, Section 27, WB Farms East, Section 33, Perry Township, Section 33.
Motion, first time on file, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Alright, um.
There's a light.
Yeah, motion light by North and Ford entrance.
There are lights out there at that door.
There is a light there, but I don't think it's a motion light.
Is it on all the time though? I don't know.
No. I think yeah. I don't know if that's to be turned on or is it dusted on? I don't know what it is.
I took a glance at that and I think, I think they got that pop machine running off that circuit too for that light out there and stuff. Cause the conduit comes over there and I was gonna look at it closer and I never got around to it, but, um, I'm thinking by the time, it'd probably be a good idea. I mean, the staff from over here, Sheriff Department, I know they come over here, different shift changes and put garbage in over here to dumpsters and stuff. And, and there were times of the year now where it could be dark, people coming in and out and stuff. Probably it's a little dark over there in that corners.
Right, so the motion light, you gotta be fairly close for it to activate. I wonder if we put like a dusted on light. And I was thinking maybe for the entrance you guys use also, cause you come in before dark.
Yeah, I know like with our entrance, there is a light outside there. You just have to flip the switch to turn it on. So if that's the same thing there, you know, like say for example, before Ben goes over to clean at the sheriff's office.
You flip the switch.
Flip the switch. I, I don't know. I'm assuming it's the same, but I don't want to, you know, if you assume, you know, happens, right?
I'm just looking at convenience wise. He's over at the jail cleaning. Come over here and flip the switch and.
But he, he usually leaves here right at four thirty to take his supper break.
So he can flip the switch.
Yeah.
I was just thinking in the mornings when you guys come in, I'm sure you're another, it's gonna be pitch black when you come in. If you feel more comfortable than the lighting.
I guess I've never really paid attention. If it's dark when I come in, I just hit the door and unlock it and turn the lights on.
I don't know, maybe we need to look at nine hours and see what it's, investigate it, see what's for switches or not. And what, if there is something down there that looks like there, I don't know, light fixture that still on the wall down there that somebody took the fixture off and the pipes, conduit is still off the wall. So I think this needs maybe further looked at.
You took a light off the wall?
Yeah, from years back. I think it's been gone. I just glanced at it the other day when I drove through the parking lot. I didn't go out and look at it, but, just think we need to look at, cause we're talking about the time to get labor charged and the light and everything like that. You're probably talking a hundred bucks.
Large expense, yeah. Might be more reasonable to having, put the light switch on before he goes to work at jail.
We'll just buy him another little headlamp so he can put on his.
Well, I guess, you could look at it this way. If it's something that you guys feel is really needed and we can get by the next six months with just flipping the switch, maybe possibly that's something to budget for next year.
Right. And we need to get it. If we do, then we need to get some price.
Yeah, because, don't wanna sound like a broken record, but we don't have the money in the budgeted to do that right now.
It, it could be something, you know, I mean, you do both of them. It could be a $500 or better bill.
Oh, if you're gonna involve an electrician or?
Yeah.
You're right. It's gonna be.
I think we need to look at it closer and see what we need to do with it.
I think if there's a fixture out there, I think some of those bulbs are motion sensitive, aren't they?
Yeah, but I don't know if the wire's been pulled or if there's still a switch there.
Well, you can get, there's, you'll get expensive motion lights by Menards or I bet even Ace Art or terrorism. Without having to, have an electrician. I think we need to look into it.
Yeah, that sounds like a winner.
Alright.
But I, I, I don't have a problem for safety sakes.
Motion to set it aside and do further investigation.
Removed.
First and a second, alright. We could go to public comment. Just keep it for three minutes and Jermaine. Any public comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, you got budget workshops. Are those open to the public that are coming up? You're gonna be talking about those stuff?
Yeah.
Are those usually posted anywhere or is?
They're posted just like any public meeting.
Okay. Alright. So it's okay for a public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're showing us more knowledge.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
What, you got anything for the good advice for the next?
No, it was just that the night game and the belt, I told him down about it earlier. Advice environmental, got done with their asbestos sampling and everything came back negative, which is good. So they sampled about four different spots up there. So now when you go forward and getting quotes and do something on those windows and walls, we know we don't have any asbestos to deal with.
That's good. That's a strong.
And he's got a, he did a pretty thorough, uh, report on it. The lab reports are here. Uh, he's got pictures that were, he took samples and everything. So it's pretty thorough. Very professional company to work with and I don't feel they ever beat us up on price. And probably, for the general services, but if you worked on stuff like that, so nothing. We haven't made a decision moving forward on, the HVAC servicing work on the different air conditioning units and stuff like that. Uh, I kinda did a little feel out about, what it costs per unit. You could be, if you're gonna budget something for that, I would say we had put about three grand in there for all the units.
What, and I called, I don't, do you still have the old, um, bid for my brass carpets for the carpet in those two places?
Yeah, I, I do have.
I called him. He said, just add about 10% to it each if I didn't have a lot of it.
That was for Ben, room up there on the accessory, right?
Yeah. It's nice.
Like waiting for water to boil.
It is. I see your area is all, you know, you got, give your stocks a paper and everything.
You see that dump's about half full? I got some more stuff. I'm gonna leave you guys a stack to fight over.
I thought maybe you just pass it on down to me. I'm like, what is this?
You can pitch it or keep it or divide it up. I don't care what you do with it.
Yeah, I don't know how to.
I always, I always kept something because I always said someday, it took me forever to dig through and find it, but I can find it.
You know, it was there.
You ought to be, see the, the old superintendent from Dr. Dobby out at MHI. He had rooms piled up. And when we had to go to do anything, move anything around, the, his secretary, he knows where everything at. He knows the paper. He knows which stack to go to and how far down the stack to find it.
He didn't come to our last couple meetings. I think he's, I know he did like the semi-retirement.
I was surprised he came to Doris's visitation. I was surprised to see him. He's, he getting L D's, not spring chicken anymore either.
He still gets around pretty good though.
Yeah.
I don't think retirement's in his blood.
He starts out there in nineteen sixty-eight. And the doctor's staff.
If you're here for the public hearing, do you guys sign in please? Thank you.
Uh, you got to claim the warrant, John.
I forgot.
I didn't do my fire one. Didn't do my hell up. I'm driving. Right, nine fifteen. Can I have a motion over the public hearing?
So moved.
Out of first, do I have a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Back over each other. Yes, alright.
The public hearing for Fangman Zone is open. Lambert, take it away.
Um, so this request is located in Section twenty-four of Byron Township. Parcel consists of five point four one acres total. And the owners and applicant is looking to parcel off the north section consisting of one point four acres. So it kind of about that. Um, and then the south portion that would, that is proposing to be rezoned to A2, they would retain for themselves. The CSR consists of ninety-nine percent ninety CSR and one percent eighty-seven CSR. Um, unique features. I did notate that this was parceled off previously, um, back in two thousand and three.
So that parcel was primarily residential at this point, right?
So technically it's all still zoned A1 agricultural, because when it was split off in two thousand and twenty-three, they just did a farmstead exemption split and kept the zoning the same. So by.
There's still all, everything.
Correct, yep. Yep. So that's where the R3 residential comes into play. Um, so they can sell off that house and then retain the feeding operation to the south. Um, the well that supplies the house is going to be on that A2 parcel. Um, so there is a condition that there will be a recorded, um, well water easement with the Buchanan County Recorder when that real estate transaction, transaction takes place. Um, the average traffic daily count is forty-five vehicles per day. And then upon approval, they will be requested to do a minor plat.
That well, is that, um, is there gonna be a well shared agreement?
Nope. So there's the well that supplies the house is located on the A2 agricultural parcel. And then for the feeding operation, there is a separate well for that. That's why I know shared well agreement is needed. Just the easement. And then there were three neighbors that were notified and none of them called with concerns. And then I'll just lastly note that the P and Z put the condition on there to approve the request with, with the condition that there will only be one single family dwelling established and the well water easement will be recorded with a Buchanan County Recorder. And the applicants are in attendance if you guys have any questions for them.
Like they speak anything about this request?
Don't wanna rent, uh, yes, anymore.
Rent on properties. Not, yeah, no.
Lack of respect.
This is a public hearing. Anybody else got any concerns about this?
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
And a person, second, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, public hearing's closed.
I'd make a motion to approve the zoning request for Fangmans.
With the conditions?
With the condition.
I'll second that.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Don't need questions. Proved and I think probably something for you to sign. Minutes, come next week.
Daniel, Neil's back.
You wanna come up, Daniel? You wanna come on up front? I want to, no. You're, you can do either one. I think your voice carries well enough. We can carry you back there.
If I understand something as.
If the camera can get a shot as the truth, we all.
I got nine twenty.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for EMS essential service.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, public hearing is open.
With our, recent defeat on the ballot measure coming in. Now, what is, a point seven percent. Um, we have to start the process over of declaring EMS an essential service to, in the future, put it as a ballot amendment or a ballot measure in the future.
Yeah, we have to start the process all over.
Yeah, completely over. So this is.
This is the first stage of the process that, so you can activate your board too.
Correct. And, I don't know, much more discussion we need to have. The necessity is huge. We have a need within the county for ambulance service and considering that seventy-one percent of the county is gonna be unfunded. It's.
Not unfunded, but un, um.
Un-served.
Un-served.
Un-served and unfunded, both.
Yeah, it's, and, the legislature by their ruling has allowed us to do this, declared an essential service and move forward to provide that service to our citizens.
It's unfortunate the state doesn't help out funding it, but, uh, it is what it is and it's up to the county to do it, so.
I did call state legislators in our area, just to see if there's gonna be any change. And you know, once you get something established, then all of a sudden they decide to start changing stuff and they didn't see any changes. I guess it also means no funds.
So with that.
Public hearing, I guess anybody got anything they wanna voice concerned about this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I guess my first question is, what do we get? You're gonna raise taxes. My taxes go up a thousand dollars a year. I wanna know what I'm getting for this tax increase. Is it gonna provide ambulance service for every place that doesn't have ambulance service currently? Is it gonna be free? You gonna have to pay for it like we do now?
It would, the, um, what we had envisioned was having a county ran ambulance because paying a for, a for-profit service is more expensive than if we would have, if we run it ourselves. This way, how it is now, the, the people that are doing it are not accepting, I shouldn't say don't accept. They give you a bill and they say that it is, it's, if you have the possible shield, then that is a out of network provider. And so then you get stuck with most of the bill. On what, the way I envision it and Daniel is also, uh, assistant chief on the Jessup Ambulance. And I believe Jessup accepts all of our, yes. So it would be much like that to where the insurance would be accepted. You know, would you owe a little bit more, like maybe a twenty percent more than, you know, I, I'm not sure how all of that works, but it would be like a normal provided service.
So is this gonna be, excuse me, is this going to be managed by the hospital board or it's gonna show up? I'm assuming it's gonna show up on our tax bill as a separate line item, just like the hospital does and hospital does, the city does.
That is correct. And it would actually be managed by the EMS advisory board, uh, reporting to the board of supervisors.
So the county is going to own the ambulance and hire the employees? Is that the understanding?
That is correct.
Working with?
Yeah.
That's the understanding.
It would be county employees and there would still be a charge for service if you take an ambulance trip to St. Luke's or Waterloo, whatever it is. There would still be an ambulance charge.
What about a charge at Independence Hospital there?
There would still be a charge, but it's, it's not nearly as expensive as it is going to St. Luke's or Iowa City or Waterloo.
Daniel, I don't, yeah.
Yeah, there, there, there's nothing free about it. Um, there is a, a cost for preparedness and there's a cost for service. Uh, the cost for preparedness is gonna be paid by, while you paying taxes. The cost for the service will be paid as a service rendered.
If I can just to.
Yeah, Daniel has a lot more.
So basically, the, the goal of this is to elevate EMS in Buchanan County and make it sustainable. So it, while it is going to significantly affect the ambulance service covering Independence when throughout Raleigh, Boski, it's also gonna affect Jessup and Fairbank and all the outlying ambulance services and first responders, because they're struggling as well. AMR is currently the only paid service in Buchanan County. Everyone else is doing this on their own time and they're struggling. So we wanna help them out. We wanna make sure that they are sustainable. If they have the equipment they need, they have enough personnel. That's where that, that tendency, I mean, we go towards. Um, we have it, our recommendation to the supervisors is to have a split between Fairbank ambulance, Jessup ambulance and the service out of Independence. Um, that way, so the money that you pay as a Jessup resident comes back to Jessup, Fairbank resident comes back to Fairbank, um, based on the taxable valuations of that district. And then, um, like John said, the, the money, how we see it, it's two, two separate, um, costs. So a cost of service and a cost of preparedness. So the cost for service, you call nine one one, they start an IV, they give you medications, they do whatever. That's the, the bill you're gonna get from the ambulance service. But you have the cost of preparedness to make sure that when you call nine one one, there's a crew that's available. They have the equipment they need, like there's gas in the ambulance. That's the cost of preparedness. So the cost of service comes from your insurance from the ambulance, you know, name is that way. And then the cost of preparedness comes from, um, the, uh, tax money to make sure that they're there. That's kind of the super down and dirty perspective of the EMS association, what we're trying to accomplish.
Dan, if you could elaborate a little bit on the, the advantage to our local EMS volunteers that we currently have in the small towns of Lamont, Aurora, Hazelton. What would this let me do for them?
So in the first responder services, when they're gonna have funding to get equipment to, you know, some of these budgets are two thousand dollars annually, which is not enough to even one major piece of equipment. So if we can get them more funding to get some larger pieces of equipment, for example, Kwaski, um, had to fundraise and use grants to get a Autopulse. It's like a thirty, it was thirty-two thousand dollars and it's an automated, uh, mechanical CPR machine, literally saves lives. Um, but they had to rely on fundraising and grants to get that, uh, which took them time. So if we can, uh, if we can get them more ease of access to those pieces of equipment, it's gonna be better patient care. Um, if we can help take away the cost of training, cause they wanna get, people wanna get certified, but it costs money to send them to those classes. If we can help cover those costs, you're gonna get more staff. They also have to recertify every two years and it would, that would cost money. So again, if we can help ease those costs, more people are gonna stay in EMS, because they don't have to pay out pocket for these things. Um, and then you start getting to do big expenses, big expenses like your vehicles and stuff like that, your ambulances, um, those you obviously need to budget years and years for. But again, everything's rising. The, we've talked several times previously about, an ambulance is, say, three hundred and fifty thousand, but then the cot is another forty thousand. The monitor's another forty thousand and all those expenses add up and it's hard for these small towns, um, even Jessup, um, and Fairbanks to budget for that sort of stuff. And by preparing the, the first responders, in Lamont specifically, Lamont, right now, you're waiting thirty-five minutes for an ambulance. If you call nine one one, first responder might get there, but there's a first five or ten minutes, but you still have another twenty-five minute wait. So by preparing the first responders with better equipment, getting them more confident in their training, more of them to be able to respond, you're creating, reducing your scene time. So when the ambulance shut it off, they don't have to wait another ten minutes on seeing the package for patient, to the IV, whatever, and get him in the rig. And then the first responders have the ability to have all that stuff done before the ambulance gets there. So they can get the patient in the rig, give a report, and that ambulance is moving to the hospital to start definitive care. You're cutting down your scene time, which creates better patient care in the long run.
Good question. I just thought of this as you're, as you're speaking through the whole scenario. So that first responder, do they have the ability then to, if they're already with, caring for that patient, do they have the ability to jump in the rig and go also?
No, first, so as a first responder service, you cannot transport. They're non-transporting service. However, if the ambulance gets on scene, they're like, hey, we're gonna need more hands for this. They can, they can ride with that ambulance as like a mutual service. They just can't do it by themselves.
Okay.
Which happens fairly often. Um, the sheriff's office, like for our, so we, like I ride with fairly often, because, uh, maybe the ambulance doesn't have a param. uh, maybe the ambulance doesn't have a paramedic or something, or they need extra hands, I'll jump in with them and ride in. Um, Kloski has, Winthrop does, Brandon does, I mean, it's very common for them to help jump in and help.
This training thing is a big thing, you know, and we're hoping that and Daniel hit on it, you know, on a pocket cost. There, I think we have people out there that want to do this volunteer service, but when they find out it's gonna cost them fifteen hundred dollars out of their own pocket because there's no money in the local budgets to fund that stuff, they just, they don't have the money to do it themselves, so I think it's an opportunity to gain more volunteers because uh we got these people aging out and there's nobody coming up new to do it.
And one of the things we just ran into, we talked about briefly before, what we just ran into is a lot of these small cities will contract or have the person sign a contract to say, hey, we'll pay for your EMT class, um, but you're gonna work for the Lamont first responders for, you know, two years or whatever, and they'll pay back that cost. Um, but we're, but we're running into it right now where there's a um EMT class in Manchester. Lamont has a first responder that wants, they're an EMR, they want to move up to their EMT to be able to provide more care. But the city of Lamont is saying, yeah, it's sixteen hundred bucks, I'm not sure we have that in the budget to be able to front that money. And so they were looking to the EMS Association, thankfully, we had grant money through the EMS Association, we were able to say, hey, if you guys pay for it, we will reimburse you for that. But the city, without that reimbursement, was basically saying, yeah, we're not, we're not doing that.
Alan, sadly, this whole thing is a real strain on local government. Um, we're not set up for it. We can't carve out um, half a million dollars or more a year out of our general fund to fund EMS service. And we've been trying to put a Band-Aid on it for the last three years. But we've been funding it through American Rescue Plan funds. And those funds are gonna run out in two more years, so we're scrambling. And the sad part of it is, the levy does pass. It still takes at least eighteen months before you ever see any funding coming in. So we have a real challenge ahead of us. Um, if we're gonna provide ambulance service within the county.
You can always do a bond against future revenues, that's easy.
We can do that if we pass the bond issues. Or the levy issue, excuse me.
Levy, as I say, that doesn't have to be bonded for.
Yeah. The levy issue passes, we can bond and then pay it back through the uh levy proceeds, but.
And I did go and check with, just surveys earlier, I went and I checked with um the hospital, let's leave sluster and um one, I can't remember his last name. Uh, the financial person out there, and they're gonna try to get some numbers together so that we can have some numbers. Because, you know, it will be nice to know, okay, we're only gonna need sixty cents, or we're gonna need this amount, you know, that was a question I was getting before, it's like, well, how do you know you're gonna need seventy-five cents? Well, because I just, that's what we can do, well, so did you start with that number and start filling in numbers? I don't know what we did, you know, so it was kind of like, it's like, let's give them the numbers and let's get a plan put together. That was, not being able to answer that part of it was, was kind of hard.
We did learn on the original ballot measure, we should have rephrased it and said that Buchanan County would be able to levy up to seventy-five cents instead of a flat seventy-five cents, because there may be a time when we can lower it based on how our financial results are. And I for, as a taxpayer, would be all for that, and I'm sure everybody else would too. But we've got to do something to get working capital.
And it was, it was very interesting to find out that the hospital does not provide the ambulance, because when I grew up, the hospital provided the ambulance service, I mean, that was just how it always was, and then in two thousand eight, I think that changed. So been kind of a struggle since then.
And by doing this resolution, this is still the first step of the process. We still have to have the board, the board still needs to meet with the Board of Supervisors points. Then they come with those recommendations back to the board. And the final thing, if the debate's on the ballot, it's still up to the voters to decide whether they're gonna vote yea or nay on towards, so it's just basically first step to get things in motion that were required to do.
I have a question. Um, how much time do you think it will save if we get this in place? You know, you said there's twenty-five minutes maybe for ambulance to get there. Cause I know when I was on the, on the ambulance crew at Fairbank, you know, it took us seven minutes to get to, you normally get to a house, we were that close. And, you know, Jessup Crew and Fairbank Ambulance is really good. So, you know, you got, it's the golden hour of of care that you need to get them to the hospital, and how much financially is it worth? So time, are you gonna save more time than now? Cause I know I had a cousin, Brandon, that, you know, the, the Benton County ambulance was busy, busy, had to get the one from Jessup, but it took quite a while, he had a stroke, well, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna reduce that? Is this gonna reduce those times likely? You know, and the bottom line is, how much is it worth to have good ambulance care, good response times and that type of thing? And I don't think that, you know, a thousand dollars is no big deal.
And that, that is a huge issue, and I know Daniel's probably comment better on it, but it's especially challenging in the rural areas. And it comes back to having those EMR people who can be on the scene right away and do some preventive care right then until the ambulance does arrive, because granted, it's gonna be could be ten, fifteen, twenty minutes before that ambulance pulls into your driveway. And I'll let Daniel.
You know, just like for the, the reason it takes thirty-five minutes in Lamont right now is because they're covered by Strawberry Point Ambulance, who are volunteer, and they are struggling. They, I, they are very, 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 very struggling. I don't know if you guys remember, they, their whole fire department walked out, um, a couple, you know, eight months ago. Ambulance wasn't part of that, but they're feeling the same struggles. And so we can't, we can't fix Strawberry Point Ambulance, but we can help Lamont first responders so that if Strawberry Point likely doesn't have an ambulance, they're, they're waiting for our uh AMR or RMC to come up there, but that patient's still getting good quality care, even though that ambulance is coming from an extra twenty miles away. That's, that's kind of the, the goal. We can't control all the ambulances, but we can get those responders and get them what they need to start that good patient care.
I mean, there's too many places that don't have enough people to cover all the hours.
Yes.
You know, probably works at John Deere, like Brandon, you know, it's a couple of people over to John Deere, well, they're not available. So we need to encourage people to get involved here, so you get the times covered.
And that goes back that circle again, if we can help pay tuition and fees for them to get certified, so you can have more volunteers to pull from, um.
We do have a lot of farmers that want to, or form help at least, that want to join, that they, they voiced interest, but there's like, I just, I don't.
They're not financially.
Yeah, yeah, no, like, I, I don't have, like, if they can't do a Kirkwood class because Kirkwood, you know, is two days a week during farming hours and all of it, and so if we had funding, we could basically host our own class on the schedule that would work for our residents and get those people that wouldn't otherwise be able to do it. That's what I'm asking. Yep.
I heard it put to me one, one day after one of the meetings and the guy, gentleman came up to me and he said, he said, nobody wants your taxes raised, and I'm like, yeah, I get it. He said, but he said, let me put it to you this way, he said, so he said, if I'm in the parking lot of Walmart, I go to start my car to leave on Nike and it doesn't start, he said, I have to call, get a tow truck and have it towed across the street. And he said, I waited a couple hours for the tow truck to come, he said, what's that? And I said, he said, it's an inconvenience. He said, now, he said, if I get sick and I have to call an ambulance and I have to wait an hour for that ambulance to come, he said, what's that called? I said, oh, that can be called death. So I thought that was kind of a really nice, a good way to say it. Do I have any other questions out there?
I have a question, but I suggestion is that the level of detail that you gave me today is what should be in the paper for everybody to see. Because it hasn't been in the paper. There hasn't been, who's gonna manage the money? How it's gonna be distributed, how it's gonna be distributed was in the paper, they're gonna split it up between the three entities that currently provide ambulance service. But the detail about the training isn't in there. All this other stuff that you've been talking about hasn't been in the paper. The time factors involved. I think it passed overwhelmingly, if you put the details out there, so everybody can see it.
Well, and, and that's a really good point. We came in at fifty-nine point three percent, we needed sixty to pass it. And sadly, Daniel and I participated in seven town halls across the county. And our largest turnout was fourteen people, it was in Raleigh. Even in Independence, we didn't have fourteen people.
Well, we didn't, we didn't do a good, good job putting the details out there.
Yeah, but
You're right.
We attempted to, and.
We didn't, we didn't solidify the details, though, we should have had, we should have had the one meeting that we had at the end, we should have had that in the beginning, so we had those details solidified like the Fairbank Mayor said, and then we would have been, had that out in the paper, and we would have been able to, um, we would have had it in, in some better grasp.
I, I, I'd just say in support of Daniel and the Advisory Board, they did a really good in their presentations at the town halls. But unfortunately, it didn't get out to everybody. And it's.
Well, the town halls, they weren't published, publicized, I didn't see them publicized in Independence, so I don't know. I heard by word of mouth that there was one going on and it's too late for me to change the plans.
They are actually publicized in the paper and on Facebook and and hard copies around town, but
It's hard to get.
A lot of times people walk right by that stuff and don't pay any attention to it.
And that, and that's been a struggle with everything for us, how do we reach the people, because people are not taking paper like they used to do, the local papers, and people rely on Facebook or websites and stuff, and it just like, we try to use all the above to reach the people and get out information so they know what's going on, but it's a struggle to reach all.
Our, this EMS Association, our standpoint was, you know, we wanted to get people thinking, so a lot of, you're, you're right, we did not have a lot of like the, the details in those releases, the, the newspaper and stuff like that, because we were trying to get people to think about it, like, oh, where does my ambulance come from, what is this gonna do to me? And then hopefully encourage them to start asking questions, to come to meetings, to talk to their ambulance service, because it is very hard to put all these details in a one-page, you know, um, uh, newspaper article or a Facebook post or something like that. And so we, we tried to do the best we could to get the word out there and then have the citizens take it on themselves and, and and say, okay, what, what is this gonna do to me? But yeah, we, we can, we will definitely try to get more details and, this is right, it is needed.
Do I have any other questions or comments?
The only thing I'm gonna say is we added, uh, I looked through all the precincts and stuff, like I said, we were fifty-nine point three. Of that, of the fourteen precincts, seven of them were over the sixty percent. Um, there were eight hundred and fifty-three people that just left it blank, which is eight and a half percent of the people who voted, which is a huge margin, we only needed point seven percent.
Right.
Um, and then of the precincts that were not over sixty percent, they were all except one within three percent of sixty. They were all over fifty, except Jessup. Jessup was the only one that didn't have the majority. Everyone else was fifty-seven and above. Um, when you break that down into votes, it was uh ten votes, eight votes, twelve votes per precinct is all we needed to, to get over. So I do think the citizens realize it's there and it's needed. The majority of the county thought we needed it, it was just not sixty percent of the majority.
Not the super.
Yeah.
Alan, I agree. It's gonna affect some people more dramatically than others because of, it's a taxing entity. But uh it's unfortunate that there's not money hanging off a tree that we can just pull it from. Somehow, we've got to be able to fund it. And the state legislature at least gave us the ability to do this if we can get the support, so that's the goal.
Was there nothing else? Hey, you've got nothing else on the convention, both Republican.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright. Thanks for everybody's input.
I need a motion to ask the first reading of the EMS Essential Services.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, we'll have two more readings. Think in the next two weeks. When each week.
That's it.
So if anybody here wants to come back at the next public hearings, if he's got anything different for us, you're welcome to do that.
Bring friends.
Friends and neighbors.
We have any public, public comments?
So when will be the next vote? After we go through the phases one, two, and three, the next vote for the EMS? How, how soon can that be made?
Well, if we have a special election, we're looking at how many thousands of dollars?
Forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand dollars, so I think
Twenty-two years for the next.
I think the next November, we have.
The next November.
We have the school board and mayor's and city elections.
School board isn't in September?
Yeah.
November.
Yeah, they changed it all. They, it used to be school boards in September, and then they decided, nope, we're just gonna have it on the November time frame like everybody else.
That would be the soonest we could hear one of them.
Is that kind of your plan?
That's what we're shooting for as a target, but we're hoping we didn't have to have that plan.
Well, so close, you would think that it, just like this gentleman said, he learned more today than he, than he could before, and I I think he's supportive of it, if not the way he talks, but so it's the information, gathering information and.
Yeah. Well, in addition to the town halls, we did speak to several civic groups around the county, uh, trying to educate people, but uh it obviously didn't quite get out to enough people.
Estimated between uh November and October of like November and past October, we had between thirty and thirty-five public meetings, like town halls, city council meetings, um, special clubs. We were trying.
Yep. And again, it's all with volunteers.
Okay, so quit how do you want to do this? And do you want to close the?
Just stay in session for the budget work.
Yeah, just stay in session. Make sure we got all the public comments taken care of first.
Alright.
Anybody else got anything? Nothing? Carolyn.
Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Good.
Hey, did you want to come here?
Thanks, Daniel.
The other direction?
I told you I showed that ten blocks. My friend number ten, real later. Keith, Carolyn, Ethan.
Nice to meet you.
What's new?
Not much, just getting ready to cut trees, got me jinxed. I know. So hopefully mine's pretty simple. I tried to go through it several times, so.
You had mentioned, it sounds like your part-time employee is gonna come back and work for you again this year?
Yes. So that's where I, um, I tried to raise. It's I raised the hourly rate for them. Um, if you think of that's too much, but I'm starting to compete with a lot of people out in the public and it is a tricky job working with chemicals and making sure. Tricky job working with chemicals and making sure they're safe and watching traffic is the major thing. People don't pay attention anymore. So you have to do defensive driving a lot. So.
I think, uh, with him having a, a year's worth of experience under his belt and familiar with secondary roads.
It was very.
It's worth the investment, I think.
Yep. It's just, um. You know. You start anywhere. And, um. You make about that much or more anymore, so.
So do you guys want, just so we're all on the same page, you wanna start with the main budget worksheet or do you wanna go over her wage spreadsheet first? Then move into it?
Yeah, well, I was kind of like, we used to get these on. Excel, didn't we used to get them on Excel? Like especially the, but the, um. Because I can, when you send it out on Excel, then I can, I can adjust the salary and I can have the FICA and everything else. Adjusted, so I can, it, it's kinda nice to be able to play around with.
If you want those, they're all to you, that's no problem. It comes first.
Thanks.
Let's come in. So in that wage spreadsheet. If you pop open that, click on that cell. It was a, um, five percent. And there it just came through, I believe.
Yep, and I already changed the eighteen to nineteen just to put it in there to see what it did. That's a pretty slick program on that.
It makes it so easy, doesn't it?
Make sure I didn't make any mistake. So yeah, it's slick that I can put that in there and kind of adjust everything and, you know, kind of go on how many hours I would have. You know, him work and, um, that worked out slick. Cause you know, it would end up being that you would be thirteen weeks during the summer and eight weeks during the spring. So, you know, I still have eight weeks to come up this spring and then, so it worked out perfect putting that in for nineteen dollars an hour. Came up to a little under sixteen. But you know, that's assuming, you know, he was working full-time. There will be holidays and stuff in there, but I do like that cushion.
How was he making last year?
He was making eighteen. But you know, when I first started here, can you believe we hired, um, five summer workers when I started here? Yep, so we went from five to. Oh, you know, then it's probably been the last, well, since you were here, we kind of went down to three. And you know, then we went down to trying to get as many people as we could because we wouldn't get applications. Um, because no one wanted to work to, now I have one guy helping me during the summer, so. Times have changed a lot. I had five of them.
You got better equipment than.
Oh, yeah, we were on the side of the truck when I first started and.
It took somebody, it took two people out there to do, well, do it one person.
Yeah, we will never go back to that. And we will never go back to the guy being exposed. That was not, um, a good situation. Our trucks are nice. In the way that they are set up.
One C.
So you got a five percent raise in for Sherilyn then? That's a.
Or that's what was on the sheet when I just received it.
That's probably what it was last year. It just needs to be updated every.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, no, I just thought you guys thought I was doing good. I thought, oh, you know, I thought that's kind of like what everybody. No, I thought there was like something across the board.
You changed that.
Geez, I've been here twenty years and I never knew that. No wonder why some years I was like, I'm only getting two percent, you know, through three. So yeah, you can change that. I didn't know that, sorry. I just thought you guys kind of go through and set the department.
And they make the, they make the call.
And Sherilyn says she loves what she does and she could do it for free if she wanted.
Exactly. Yeah, my husband would be like, ah.
Think so.
You know, yeah, um. Well, this would get me to, um, and I shouldn't compare it to secondary roads, but I do. Um, this would get me, if I did the twenty-seven ninety-six, it would get me up to an operator three. So I wouldn't be an operator two anymore. So it's kind of.
If you ever did any, and I don't know if we got anything from you in the past, you're kind of a standalone, single department. Type person with your part-time help.
I did.
Pull any comparisons from some of the other full-time?
Yeah, I did that last year. And, um, I'm on the lower bottom. Yeah, by far. I think I'm probably second from the bottom. So, but you know, I, I like to stay compared to secondary roads. I feel like, you know, I do, um, just much as they do and they do just as much as I do, so. I like to say comparable, but yeah, I'm on the lower end of being like roadside managers. There's some places, you know, like managers, um, they just manage, but I like to keep.
They have you in with the secondary roads, I believe, on our.
The thing about it is too, you got, there's been a very good working relationship between you and, and secondary roads guys. I mean, when you need assistance and help with big projects, that guy's pitching to help you.
Yes, they do.
During snow removal time, I, I know you all. Fuel out to the road graders, you've operated. Pushing snow and. You know, cause you're not out spraying and, and.
Yeah, I like to stay busy.
So I mean, you're. It's kind of a trade-off.
You get a give and take.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, the give and take.
And I hate for you, secondary roads and you both to operate without that relationship.
Oh, you couldn't, you couldn't operate because, yeah, I help them when they need and they help me when. Yes, and, um. Yes, I think we. You know, it took twenty years, but yeah, you know, and I think, um, we respect each other. And everybody sees the progress. Everybody wants to, you know, work and stay busy. I, you know, that's what the county's about is getting stuff done and.
Cause I know there's a lot of counties, you see different counties where I see that the brush and stuff growing out. Is really terrible. I think we do a pretty good job in our county trying to keep ahead of that.
Well, I'm gonna throw this out there because what we do now is gonna set the tone for the rest of them.
Yep.
And we got a two-point-five percent raise. I really don't feel that generous this year.
Yep, that's fine.
Also, what do you recommend? I think so, I guess. I mean, we're starting here where it's just like Dawn said, we're setting the tone here and stuff. You know, with, with a lot of difficulty and pain going through the whole COVID thing and.
Yeah.
Mission was going wild.
Yep, understandable. And yeah, I simply made the mistake. I just assumed, I do apologize. That, that's why everybody, you know, was, I didn't realize that it went off of. And you know, last year I was just trying to catch up, you know, because I was below everybody out and I do feel like. I have just as much as, um, responsibility, even sometimes more. I take the heat when.
What is, what is secondary roads?
It's next, next week. We do negotiations next week. They're. They are in the morning and, um, sheriff in the afternoon.
I am gonna just make a comment. Comparing her to secondary roads is one thing, but remember she manages her own budget too. And manages. A part-time employee. So. Consider that.
Right.
The only other thing I could say that you would consider is when I'm out on a tree project, something goes bad. It does come back to me. You know, I'm the one who has to deal with the landowner. It does come back to me when we are out on a tree project. I'm the one they say to me, you know. If I cut something, they cut something wrong, it comes back on me, which is okay though. That's my job and I have learned to lur, work with landowners and I know how to, you know.
You're the project manager.
But you know, you're also, you know, they have their own minds too, you know. I don't know, you know, I'm fine if you wanna set the bar at three percent, you know. I just wanna stay level with secondary roads is the thing because I worked hard to, um, get where I'm at. I got twenty years under my butt, but, or, Jesus, twenty years under my belt. I almost said my butt. Twenty years under my belt. So you know, I, that's, I just wanna stay comparable to them, so.
You'll find understanding. John, what are your thoughts?
I just gave them.
Well, so do you have like a different percentage in mind or what was your?
I'm just making a statement.
So I get to be the bad guy and just get to make a statement?
There you go.
Works? That's called politics.
I, I, you know, I, I kinda agree with that. Three percent, let's, let's try and get back to some kind of normalcy and stuff and.
Yeah, what we never having before.
I mean, we, we had things really, demands were really atrocious, uh.
Yeah.
Acid stuff and we still, we're still using taxpayer dollars.
Oh, yeah, understandable. No, and like I said, I didn't know. From last year that, last year I know I fought hard because I wanted to get up to an operator two. An operator one at the county, they, um, are a janitor. And I work with chemicals, I work with chainsaws, so I was not a janitor. You know, I put my, I go out there and I, um. You know, chemicals are chemicals, no matter how you work with them. And chainsaws are chainsaws, so that I did fight hard last year. That's why I got the five percent. Because I didn't feel like I was an operator one. So that's why I went up to the operator two. So the operator two is the twenty-six sixty-three. So that's where, you know, it all, I, um. So yeah, I'm fine with that, you know, I understand you're spending taxpayers' money.
So at three percent, then it would be twenty-seven forty-three, um, with a salary of fifty-seven. Thousand sixty, five dollars, fifty-two dollars and eleven cents.
Okay, that'll be fine.
I'll adjust those.
Fifty-seven thousand, fifty-two dollars and eleven cents.
That's up three. That was, how much are we?
Twenty-seven forty-three. It's looking at cutting taxes, property taxes again this year.
Oh, I understand and I do apologize that I walked in with this. I had no clue. You know, and now as I look back, I always wondered why I was stuck with a certain number year after year after year. And it wasn't a very high percentage. No wonder why I got behind secondary roads all those years. But last year I was determined, so that's why I had what I did last year, but I am perfectly fine with. The three percent because I do understand that we are working.
We got limitations put on us from higher ups too.
Yeah, no, and I understand it. I am not complaining at all. Because I, I just, last year I was not going to be where I was and. I was a little, had a little bit more pep in my step last year when I came in here, so.
And I was hoping you, you don't have no green sheet.
No, all I get is the, um, seed every year, but I don't get a green sheet off that. I get the grant, so I get twenty acres of prairie seed grass every year.
Is there anything going on out there to more upcoming in grant money and stuff like that for any additional equipment or anything that's any?
They weed the equipment, you know, they go off of a certain percentage you'll pay for. You know, and that is decreasing everything. So you know, and equipment's getting more expensive. I would love to get more, you know, things. I've looked into different things, but, um. You know, outweigh, it doesn't sometimes fit right now, you know. So yeah, it's, um.
Oh, your equipment stuff, you, when it comes to servicing, you service your, all your own equipment, uh.
Like my spray trucks and yeah.
Oil changes and you do all that.
You know, I did all the oil changes, um, Rick Griner, how he's had us do all of our oil changes and maintenance it and stuff just because. Sometimes Dustin helps me now, which is nice. He's kind of spoiled me sometimes with the oil changes. Cause he can do them so quick, but yeah, I do like all the oil changes on my pumps and. But, um, he has helped. You know, he jumps in and helps. So I always say he spoiled us later.
Good team.
Yeah, he, but yeah, I can do that.
Looking at our other line items. Just going down through here. You know, like office supplies sounds reasonable. I'm looking at, uh, legal notices and publications. So far this year, we've only spent two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars on a thousand-dollar budget.
On which part is it?
Oh, it's on the publications and legal notice.
I don't have them.
I, I got on the wrong one. I'm sorry.
I thought, oh no, I made a mistake again.
I know.
Uh, what we kind of do like we did in the past, it always seems to work.
Go down.
We'll go down. Line instead of hopping around.
I probably start down at fertilizer and seed because the other ones below the salaries. Though you can, there's nothing you can do with those.
Well, no, I have a few questions about that though. Sure, your life insurance and your flex fee lines don't match what's on the pink sheet. Can I make that adjustment?
Yes.
To what should be on the pink sheet? Okay, I'll fix those.
I didn't. The pink sheet meaning, uh.
The salary.
Okay. Um, I thought we received a different like email afterwards. Oh, you're making adjustments on that, like the flex was a little different or?
The flex total for fiscal year twenty-six, that should be fifty-four dollars and you budgeted forty-five.
Okay, I went off of something else, I think. So, yep, that would be perfect.
Yep, I'll adjust those.
So we go down to underestimated, um, fertilizer, fertilizer and seed, fifty-six oh seven.
What, what type of seed are you using? Are you, I mean, at some point. I, I realize we're trying to get back to native grass and something like that, but there's, there's a limitation as far as how much you can do that. Um, at what point do we reach that we've got? It's very real, that's a front half, it's the, it's the, uh, grass.
Um, most of it's cover crop, you know, that we put in a lot of cover crop for erosion, um. That stabilizes the ground before they, and you have to put a lot of cover crop into like a roadside, a ditch bottom. Um, the prairie seed, like I say, I get a lot of it through a grant, so I'm not spending as much on prairie seed. That comes from the grant. Yeah, twenty acres. So this would be more like your cover crop, grass seed, um, if we tear up a yard. You know, we put back and we try to put it back to what it was there before. So if they don't have, like, you know, I've had people want grass seed where it was, grass seeds expensive. The prices have come up. If you're looking at like the prices for this year, it's different compared to like. In the years past, we spent a lot of money because we had to do the Kowski diagram. We had to do from Independence to Winterup, Winterup to Independence. You know, we had large, large, large ditch cling outs, so that costed a lot more. This last year, it's more just stabilizing the ditch. So we can. You know, and, um, that's where cover crop, you know, all its rye grain. Nothing's, um, gone down in price. So that's where, but yeah, if you look at the years past, it's because of those huge projects we had to do. But this year, you know, it would be more, you know, I have eight thousand in there. But I used five thousand this year.
Do you expect you to use another five thousand?
Well. No, not before June. I have, you know, I still have the carryover. It's gonna be, um. This summer, um. I'll be honest, I had to redo some projects because I had a bunch of projects that I thought was stabilized and then we got all that rain. And it washed it out, so they had to go back and redo some projects, so I had to re, um, seed areas.
Are you doing hydro seeding on those or?
Yeah, you know, pretty much you got to. Yeah, you know, pretty much you got to anymore because they haven't sold, and um.
Get it to grow.
Yep, and I had to read, so no, in June, that's um.
So that reestimated, does it need to be fifty six oh seven then?
Oh, I'll have.
Total amount, so she has already spent forty five forty, excuse me, forty five forty four thirty nine and she's reestimated at fifty six oh seven, so the difference is what she actually has left to spend. Because it's about eleven hundred dollars.
And that would be a pallet of oats.
So that's what you?
They planted on is a pallet of oats in the spring.
I have one other question, just honestly because I don't know. This upcoming project for the Kwaskwetan diagonal, is that going to be this next fiscal year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that something that she may have to take into consideration regarding?
Are they gonna tear up the ditch again though?
I, I don't know, I don't have any idea.
Yeah. But I think they already did the whole ditch, you know, tear up the.
I, I don't think there's gonna be.
As much, no, I think it might just be right along the.
Shoulder end.
Yeah, I hope so, I'm gonna go back and ask about that, but yeah.
Maybe that's something we might wanna investigate as she's wearing the preliminary of her budget in case she needs to budget a little bit more.
Yeah, I have eight thousand budgeted for next year, but yeah, I only will need a pallet of oats in the spring, so that's why I took it back down, that I didn't need the eight thousand.
Just out of curiosity, that Kwaski diagonal project does increase the need for Sherilyn to have more, can that be tied to that project and not funded through her?
Yes.
It should be.
And I don't know, when a project, when they, when they do design work, if they're, if they're, like Alex puts dollars in there for any seeding cost or anything like that in there.
Cause technically it really shouldn't have to come out of her budget.
Yeah, it's just a matter of whether or not they did it, so, I mean, I did it as a life project, so.
Yeah, it's, you know, with my budget, I prepare for, you know, I think.
Well, you've never, you never did that, some of these other projects, like D sixty two and stuff and D twenty two, I mean, that was, when them roads were done, that was done by secondary roads at cost, I've never seen you had to put extra dollars in.
At some point in time, she's had to spend some extra dollars though.
For D twenty two?
Yeah, and then when we did, they did D sixty two, like going north of Jessup, up towards Fairbank and stuff, I don't remember you think that was where they tore the ditches up or anything, you was additional cost there for any of them projects, was there?
I don't, well, how many year, or, like.
Twenty two's ten years ago now.
Well, the more recent one is.
D sixty two too.
Where they.
Did the old highway have to fairbank?
They didn't tear up much of the ditch bottom, I only had to spray certain sections of that. There wasn't a whole lot, they did kind of buy the culverts and stuff, but no, there wasn't a whole lot, you know, the big. Yeah, the seed did, but the um that wasn't very much, but you gotta remember, I get my prairie seed through the grant, so it's more, um you know? I think this, you know, summer, I don't have probably as many, I don't know, it all depends, the guys, it's good weather, they're still ditch clinging out there. So they still are tearing up a lot of ditches. So you know, I have a lot of bridges that I plant, um.
So the eight thousand is gonna be fine, I think that's what we're getting to.
Yes, the eight thousand's perfect.
Right, chemicals leave, we don't have anything there, maybe with chemicals, or we don't know?
I increased it a little, but I will be fine, I have some chemical layover from this fall.
Oh, I have nothing. I was doing, I don't want to brush now?
Yes, yep.
So you had.
I did over budget a little.
Twenty eight budgeted, you, you, on the reestimate, you got thirty five.
Yes, but um.
But if you look at the bottom dollar of the budget, what she originally requested was a hundred and fifty nine thousand five seventeen, it is currently increased three dollars. So if the line item is over budget by a reestimate, it's okay as long as the bottom line is still in check.
Yes, so which I, you know, I, I don't want to, well, I don't want to ever go, which I didn't even realize there was three dollars, or I would have changed that. Yeah, but no, I want, since I've been here, my goal is to, yes, I have to play with my budget sometimes, every year's different for me, some years I go crazy on.
Vouch, the four years I've done this, she's one of the few that she may be off a line item, but overall, her bottom line is exactly to the penny what she requested a year ago.
Right.
And that's exactly the way we want it to be.
Thank you. Oh, I did, I'm impressed, I'm gonna walk out of here a little bit, but no, I do, because that's, that is my goal though. I work very hard on not doing that. Well, you know, you can go back my twenty years and I have never been over.
Your malleage subsistence, if you're gonna go to that school this year, you probably need to put something into malleage and subsistence.
I will um probably use a county truck, so I won't need it.
You want just?
Yeah, I'll be fine, I'll be, supply lunches and stuff like that, and like I've told in the years past, I'm gonna eat no matter what, so.
We don't have, we don't have a county truck, so I always.
Yeah, no, we have the county truck, so no, by inch, um I don't know, maybe that's the least amount of concern for me is to, I'm gonna eat no matter what.
Well, I see you, you dial in that bag, so that must mean that you're, you're keeping things under control there, is there there anything else that secondary roads, it sounds like you got a great working relationship with secondary roads, but there's something else that could be done to, to help that or?
With the chemicals? Um, we're doing pretty good on Brian.
It really looks great out there.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good, if you would have seen it when I started twenty years ago, yeah, we're doing pretty good, the thing, um we still have a lot of projects and stuff, we're getting to the project stage that we use the bucket truck for a lot of things because we have to cut back, but um secondary roads do help in the winter, you know, they're busy during the summer, but during the winter, you know, um we're, we've already started going out cutting small projects, so, you know, as a county, um and I know you brought up the natives and stuff like that, but we have, you know, there was a study done by Lion Creek and we had the most natives in this county, which did help, you know, with that, so yeah, I know with natives, some people say, you know, when do we have enough? You know, I enjoy study after study after study, we need to still keep. If we don't have trees, you know, we, you know, people talk about pheasants and stuff like that, well, we need the flowers for the insects to get, to be the so yeah, there's a whole stage with the ditches that a lot of people.
Ten years, thirty years of reaching that.
Yeah, you know, um until I don't get the grant seed, I'll probably always plant natives, you know, it's.
Sherilyn, um, we need tires and stuff, you take that out and machinery equipment parts.
Yes, and I will need.
Thousand dollars, I mean, only got a thousand dollar here, I mean, a set of tires gonna cost you over that.
She also adds on the next page, a motor vehicle equipment maintenance line for twelve hundred.
Yep, so.
Not used any of it.
Yes, and I will put two tires on my truck, one of them needs trucks in the spring, but we're gonna wait till the spring.
Really got one then that needs tires?
Yep, only one of the spray trucks. And then if, you know, really, if I do, um, I haven't bought tires for the trucks, I think two years, but um if one needs another one, I can always go into the next year budget, so I'm good with that.
Basically it's funded for half the year, then they, they swap over to secondary roads and work out their budget for that other half of the year. Do you do anything with the sword or you just always um, on your, your budget?
I'm always on my budget, yeah, so we switch off and on, you know, it equals out into the end, um.
Yeah, you control your own budget.
Yeah.
It looks good.
Yeah, you know, and it all depends, you know, um our setup is good because, you know, like I said before, you know, Brian's a good engineer, you know, excellent person to work with. But in the future, if we ever got an engineer that um was against prairie or what, you know, my program stands for then I can have a little pushback, being that I have my own budget, so. It does give a lot of the county, uh, you know, difference. Hey, how's it going, Brian?
So you're doing better today than last week?
Feel better, can't hardly talk and I've got. That's, that was my comment when I was trying to give one of my presentations there that yeah, I, I commented, the Lord's blessed me in so many ways, I can't list them, that I was hearing in the that I was hearing from the group that they're blessed too because now I can't speak.
Since you're here, secondary roads has bought up in this budget thing, Sherilyn, on the Kwaski diagonal. Is there gonna be any ditch work tore up, we're talking about seeding and stuff like that, is that that total project, any hams that comes out of your budget for that road project, she don't have to worry about that.
That's correct, that's correct, one other thing you might be interested in is while we're there, remember we talked to you about going after a grant for a roundabout and such? And um, and you guys said you're not interested in building a separate shoulder, but I walked away with the impression you are interested in doing the roundabout and rehabbing those shoulders. At any rate, we are one of the finalists in there, now we'll go back and revise things. But if, um, if I need to put this on the agenda to clarify something, Alex has done the preliminary, Alex actually did all the work on putting this all together too.
But you said roundabout down the Kwaski intersection.
No, roundabout will be purely at C fifty seven and Delta thirteen by the auction bar.
We don't, we don't wanna quit, we're working on Sherilyn's budget right now.
Train down the track.
Yeah. What my question was on the.
And I, I mean, see doing the jump. But in the past, I've always paid for the seed. That's what he's asking for, he was saying in my budget, I have seeding in my budget, and he's wondering if that should I've always paid for it in the past, which I've had no problems, but he's wondering if that project you guys should be.
Of course, we have some because we've got that curve that we're doing, and so that will disturb ground there.
So that's, that's in your budget though, so we don't have to worry about adding it to ours.
We don't have to worry about putting that herbs, no, okay, good.
Okay.
Yeah, I answered the question, I'll double check with Alex, but I'm sure that's in the plans.
Okay.
It's in the plans for the roundabout too.
Alright, how's everything else looking, guys?
Well, that's, that's a couple of years away because we're working on trying to find the funds right now.
Okay.
And about a one point six million on the roundabout.
So basically, if you look at the bottom line, her increase in her budget is four thousand one hundred, or four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars. But thirteen forty two, or actually round up thirteen forty three of that is salary and benefits.
So and I had the total, I had her total salary, um grand total of wages and hypers and after the adjustment, it's down to three percent of eighty four twenty six thirty two. If I did my math correctly, that brings her bottom line to this next year at one sixty two eight thirty five, is that correct?
I would have to go in and Anna and I would have to, it's gonna be a.
I'll adjust it all and.
Yeah. Because there's a decrease in the salary that needs to be adjusted, from what originally was in that sheet that you have.
Doing that, that affects the hypers and bike and all that.
Correct. I'll update it all and I'll send them all back out to you guys.
Okay. Excel spreadsheet technology?
Yeah, send one to me too, please.
It's with Excel spreadsheet technology?
I'm lost, yeah.
I make it so simple for you.
I know, I just like the one, I just make the one number and like everything else just falls like we're supposed to fall, it's so nice.
Alrighty, anything more from me then?
Oh, Sherilyn, looks good.
Alright, awesome, well, I'm glad that, I'm done. That's the first thing, now I can go back and be like, relax, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Does someone wanna call down and let Ashley know we're ready for her?
She's not, I'm all waiting. Alright, I'll grab her. Or is she out there? She catches it his head up a little after ten.
No, she's not.
Okay, we'll call.
Alright. You have a number on here?
Should be on her.
Karen, Karen's number.
One six, threshold two and eight.
Yes. Karen's on the meeting, maybe she heard us, I don't know.
Hey Karen, we're ready for HR.
Sounds good, exactly, I'll be up, alright, thanks, yep.
That is sounding like kind of a weird Karen, that does really sound like Karen.
Well, I'll find you, that'd be a new budget book found for you, a folder.
We will get one.
I think we might have an extra binder upstairs.
We have, we have plenty around here.
I taped mine together last year.
Just.
You could have grabbed.
I don't.
This one.
But take the elevator up and we'll go grab a whole bunch of them.
Good morning, Ash.
Anne's there, I'll let you slide down one.
Sounds good.
I can sit up in the appointment sometime, we should go sleep.
Yeah, I've been looking at.
You got a day you're busier than others or?
Um, we should probably do it sooner than later because on the Voya information we might be out of the deadline date to submit things, so we'll, I'm gonna reach out to group benefit partners and then we'll, you'll have to come down to see if you.
Maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, or if you wanna come down even after, I don't know how long everything will take here.
Think I brought everything with me.
Okay. Yeah, probably definitely sooner than later, so then, cuz I'm gonna reach out to Tracy, our account manager, benefits manager and see. Yep, yep, so I'm reaching out to her to see if they would accept anything past that, so, but yeah, we'll talk about it more and see.
Oh my God.
I know.
So, we are these, the salary, I think was already, we reached that when we run run.
I wasn't allowed to be in that, in that meeting.
No.
So I, I don't know.
No, when we, as far as, when Karen resigned, I mean, that was just a couple of years ago.
Yes.
She went to sixty thousand, so, Friday, am I right, or is it Monday?
It, yep, it'll be Monday, I'll be on my hourly rate.
Up to the sixty thousand.
Yep, so I'll be my hour, hourly rate this week and then the following week, I'll switch to salary.
That's mine, we're shady.
And then how did we come up with the F Y twenty six sixty salary?
Yeah, so as Karen and I were going through, I just heard some pointers, the, we first looked at the salary survey for the ISAC and then also I was told to just kinda, you know, budget higher just in case, um, with, you know, any changes that may be coming up, so for example, we looked at the salary survey, so the top five counties above us and the bottom five below us, just found those averages and um, the sixty five would be closer within the bottom five, it'd still be the less or the lower um part of that salary survey. Um, but the biggest reason why we did that. We did that just to, you know, to be safe, like I said, I'm not trying to like overshoot my first year here, but as discussed in my um. Interview, we talked about the SHRM certification that I'm um currently studying for now that I'll be taking next uh late spring. So we discussed that and I'd like to be, you know, recognized for that, you know, my own time and money out of this. On top of my bachelor's degree in HR, and then I also have four other certifications and then my SHRM certified professional um. Certification that I will be obtaining and I am currently working on, so I don't know. How that works with with me obtaining that certification, if that would be, you know, an additional to my salary, if not, you know, that I just. I'm not sure how that works with this being my first year doing this, I'm open to anything, again, I'm not trying to overshoot or anything, just wanted to. Put that number down there just so I'm not under just to be safe, so. And I don't know how all of that works with if I do obtain my CP that I am studying for currently, like I said, I'll be taking that next. Um, late spring twenty twenty five is when I'll be testing for that. And again, I'm open to anything, I just didn't know, so.
Six, I would look, sixty five puts you uh under, a little bit underneath the average when you did the ISAC survey.
So the top five, well, I guess that doesn't really matter, the the top five below us or the bottom five below us. The average of that is sixty six thousand seven hundred ninety six point six.
So you're below the bottom.
But yes, um exactly, and I just was told, you know, to look at that salary survey, but. Um again, the biggest thing too is obtaining my SHRM certification, I don't know if that would be recognized within the salary or not. Again, I'm not sure. New for this, though.
To get that sure.
Yeah.
Not only that, then that that's another added resource for the county to fall back on. Because you can get support from them, that group.
Exactly, and I actually am a member of SHRM, like the Nationwide, and then also the Cedar Valley SHRM as well and. Like I said, this, you know, this is additional thing, any knowledge or information, you know, I can gather is great, but just on top of my. Four-year HR degree and then my other four certifications that I've obtained, this would be another one. But this was discussed in my interview as well, so.
Sixty five that will push this well below the.
You can look on, right, you can look on ISAC, they have, they have the salary.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And again, I know every county's not the same, and a lot of these too, I've noticed, they put like years of service. And the ones below us, um it goes three years, zero years, one, five and zero as well, and of course, I would be in. That zero range as well, um again, not trying to overshoot, just wanted to be, you know, safe and sorry if I'm. You know, am taking that SHRM certification.
So there's not a lot of longevity there, even with that.
At the, yep, there's two that have zero and then one that has one.
She, you got any input on this?
No. I was just gonna say, I I think if she gets her SHRM certification, I don't have any problem with that.
And again, if it's, if I pass as well, you know, you, you know, spend all this time and money, money studying, getting ready and um. That's something that you take when you have a scheduled date and um, I, you know, you hope to pass, but you can never guarantee.
With a three percent raise. Something would be. Eighteen hundred. But if we give her a ten or twelve percent raise, you know what else happens downstairs?
And again, yeah, not trying to overshoot, new to this, I just wanna make sure I have all the information in there.
We're not oversh, we're not, we're still below what we're given present.
Yeah.
That that's the bottom line, we're not going over and above that. And we talked extensively about this SHRM training, how important it was, and we got somebody here that's got a degree. And add that all together, uh.
Year over year. Definitely less for the salary as well, that's that's the reason I'm not.
I'm fine with it, sixty five myself. Is that what you said, John?
Yes.
Then twenty five?
That is the same as it was last year, some of these I'm not like completely aware on, but we didn't really increase um much from last year.
What comes out of minor equipment?
I would have to look it up.
I've, yeah, nothing.
I'm assuming it was items purchased initially when you guys moved Karen to her own office, that's why.
Oh, I think so, yeah, that's. Yes.
That would be my random guess, right?
Yeah.
But without logging out of this one and logging into the network, I can't pull that, and I need to remember to do that when we're in these budget workshops.
They actually need it and then we'll just take her up to the third floor and let her shop.
Oh, we gotta.
Oh, it's pretty bare up there now. I'm assuming the official publication and legal notice was posting for your job.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, and it's a lot more expensive to, you know, post in the newspaper and I'm. And we're kinda, you know, going away from that with times nowadays, we're gonna go more into, you know, Indeed, and there's other websites I've been shown to. Um by Karen, which has been great, so, and I've worked with Indeed in the past and it's, you know, been good, we get a lot of applicants in there. Just a matter of screening all of them. Indeed is, and no cost too, there is cost, you can like. Pay to advertise certain things and have your jobs like up at the top of the list, things like that, but. Um at right now, um Indeed is no cost to us, and I'm able to get in there, so.
Postage and mailing, do we really?
We're not, um Karen stated that we're not for our postage and mailing, what does it say here? It's not paid of our own budget, it's out of uh your guys' I believe.
Because that was another thing when it was the big hurrah to get her out of here in two days, it's never been set up. As her own meter under the postage machine.
So it's coming out of the supervisor's budget at this point?
Yeah, when I mail anything, I'll do it under the supervisor's number.
So do we, if wanna zero that out or set up another account or?
We set up another account, I suppose we'll have to.
Yeah, so how much did she use? I mean, how much would we actually estimate this?
I can't imagine.
He doesn't lose very much for postage.
No.
Yeah, within my uh few months here so far, I've. Um the total year to date, our supervisor's postage is less than a hundred and twenty dollars.
That's all that's me.
Yeah.
For the year.
Yeah. Oh, for the year, yeah.
This year, yeah.
So, a lot of it can be fax now or sent through, you know, encrypted.
So let's, let's take postage and write it down to um. Two hundred.
Two hundred?
For your reestimate or for next year?
Year and a hundred dollars for the reestimate.
Postage and mailing, okay, hundred dollars.
And then two hundred for next year?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Oh, did you guys have any questions on, are we on printing services? We increased that a little bit.
Yeah, and we increased it for.
Um, when I get that employee handbook updated, we're gonna have to. Um in the past, print out handbooks and pass them out to employees, deliver them and have. It's signed saying that they've received a copy of the employee handbook, so whether we do it via PDF. Or if we printed out um physical copy.
Chronically and have them sign a form that they received it.
I could figure that out too, and I know some people would um like hard copies as well, so maybe just. You know, kinda having that there of, you know, some people might want hard copies, but yeah, I can. That's what I was thinking, like most people, we can maybe send a PDF to and I can send like a fillable form of them signing and dating it and then sending it back to me. Um, you know, and that's once that's updated too, and that'll take a second to do, so.
It'll have to take a minute.
It will take a minute for sure.
How did subsistence?
Um increased a little bit, um because. The conferences, I timed out, I won't be going to, um so there's the SHRM annual conference that goes back and forth from Corahville to Des Moines. And I've attended those in the past and um put that down, I won't be attending next year though, um. It's during my wedding week, so I'm not gonna, it's like during that time, so I'm not gonna go then, I already timed it out, I'm like. Oh yeah, he'd love that, um and then I will um also, I'm a part of the Cedar Valley SHRM group as well, um. But I don't know if you would need to reimburse me for mileage for those, they're normally like in Waterloo, and of course, I wouldn't go if I have things going on, it's just. You know, they're helpful, um like seminars, little training sessions to just, you know, most up to date.
Understand.
You would, okay.
Reimburse, you need to be.
Okay.
If you're traveling for any type of meeting.
Okay, and those are normally like once a month, and of course, I wouldn't go each one, but um I've gone in the past, I really enjoy them, learn a lot from other employers around the Cedar Valley area. And then, of course, that SHRM conference, um again, either in Des Moines or Corahville, it's in Des Moines next year, I won't go next year, but the year after. I could possibly go to the Corahville one.
Yeah, I'm, I think it's great that you're willing to.
Very great, I learned so much and networked with so many people um in the HR field, it's it's really great. Exactly, yeah, exactly.
We don't have any county vehicles available for those, and that's okay.
I'd rather take my car, I would hate for anything bad to happen, I'm just, I'll just take my car.
I'm just gonna control my own car.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Just a comment, we decide what we're doing with that one from Public Health, if they don't want anymore.
I I don't think we should take it back.
No, we don't want it back.
That, that's the one that they're talking about nickel and dime it.
Nickel and dimeing them to death, so they wanna give it back to us.
We don't want it back though.
Part of it, cause they never drive it or?
No.
I have no idea.
When they do drive it, it's like, it's old enough, it doesn't have like any of the backup cameras on it, it doesn't have like. Your mileage, like when you can pull up your mileage on your thing, so then you're.
How do we get to the sage without a backup camera?
Back on the train.
Okay, where are we at now?
Gee.
Um, are we at school? Uh what, or no, we were just there.
For your telephone though, if you've already spent almost a hundred dollars this year, I don't think a hundred dollars is gonna get you by through the next six months.
Okay. Yeah.
I can.
I don't really know much, yeah, whatever works.
I can look and see how much it is a month.
Okay.
Approximately and, but you know.
Okay, perfect, yeah, if we, yeah, that sounds.
Fifty bucks, you'd be close being safe on that.
I would say double that, I would say two.
Two hundred?
Yeah.
Go to two hundred.
And is this stuff that I will need to update and send back to you or, okay, okay, perfect. Okay.
Excellent, two hundred.
Okay, yep, sounds good to me.
And if it's more than two hundred, I'll let you guys know.
Alright, school instruction?
That is with um my Cedar Valley SHRM membership. Um, oh no, that's below, do use a membership, School of Instruction, I think that would, that would be like the cost to go to. The SHRM conferences and the seminars, like I just went to one not too long ago.
So you think that two hundred fifty is gonna be right for the rest?
Yeah, I mean, the SHRM conference one, that might just be the entire budget, I don't know how much, I forgot what it was um. A few years ago, and they don't have the rates out now for how much the SHRM conference would be. Um, I can't imagine it would, let's see, where are we at, school? Can't imagine.
Also got Ashley the other day signed up through ISAC to get, to get the up email updates.
Okay.
Not all the time, but once in a while, they do have HR stuff through our auditor's affiliate affiliate. But at least she's on the email, she gets those notifications now.
Yeah.
Something comes up.
So I don't know if, is it two fifty or three twenty five, I'm s- I don't know if that would be enough, but then again, I'm not gonna go out and attend. You know, so many things when, you know, there's work to be done and things to do, so, you know, just the big ones I would definitely attend, and then maybe in the future. Would attend more.
I'm fine with leaving that.
Is the membership, that's a SHRM?
Yep, that's the Cedar Valley SHRM chapter, and then also the um, the National SHRM Association. Association, association, geez, I can't say that word.
They're not gonna have any huge increase that you know?
Um, I just actually renewed and I got some, I renewed like um. Maybe right when I got here, a little after, I or a little before, I think it was a little before, I just renewed my membership and it was like. There was a deal going on, I think it was like a hundred and seventy five dollars, and that lasts a year, and then you renew that um the following year, so.
And we're going down to.
My only other question on the benefits, Ashley.
Yes.
And not to be nosy, but when you do get married, TJ gonna come on your insurance?
No, he's gonna be on his, yep, and so I'll just.
Didn't wanna miss that increase if.
No, I, yeah, no, I appreciate that, I'll be at single family when I um get married and then um. Eventually down the road, we'll search it to family, but no, he has his own. Okay. So.
Um, you know, you're gonna know your office chair, your office desk, everything, all your office furniture is. Gonna be gone for another year, you think?
Yeah, everything's fine, yeah, should be good. Yeah, maybe, maybe, yeah. Discuss with Dawn about that.
No, the dumpster's gone.
But yeah, everything's good down there, should be good, so.
And something that you might think about, you know, everybody's having them desks to be raised, so you don't have to step, you know, and stuff, so maybe something. Like that in the future.
I was thinking about that, um I just thought about it this weekend, funny enough, I was just thinking, um those standing desks, I looked at them on Amazon and.
Check with Gina.
Gina, okay.
In the treasurer's office, she had some extra ones that her girls weren't using and couldn't get any takers on them. I do not know if she's gotten rid of them.
Okay.
But double check with her.
Okay.
There's one still in her office, that they were gonna take down to my office, you can.
But she had a couple of them.
Yeah, and if, I mean, you you go for it, like you can definitely have it.
They wanna get rid of it.
Yeah, cause it's like a nice, nice thing to have, but yeah, I was just thinking about that, so maybe I'll I'll discuss with her, then if not, I'll put that for next year maybe. Cause that would be nice, I mean, it'd just be nice.
Yeah. I I.
Be good for you.
Yeah.
Is there anything else?
Yes, there is something else.
Okay.
Been a thing in the past.
Okay.
When you need to contact Allison Cooney, there's nothing in here. Who's gonna, if you.
That's because it comes out of non-departmental, because it applies to all the departments.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's what's gonna say in that department ninety nine.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Hey, she had to put something in her budget for that and she, yes, contact.
Okay, yeah, that's a good thing to bring up, so yeah, it comes out of the.
Yep.
All the others, okay.
It's good.
I'll update it and I'll send it out to you.
Sounds good.
Please, I should introduce myself, I'm needed.
Ashley, nice to meet you.
Alright, thank you guys. And Clayton, if you just wanna come down maybe this afternoon or tomorrow, we can just discuss more things and look at that, I'm gonna reach out to group benefit partners, see.
We'll try to lose, this is a whole new thing for us, if we do something, we're aware of this.
Yeah, so I'm gonna reach out now when I get down there, we'll we'll see what we can do, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys, have a good week, yes, you too.
See the next people.
No, it's ours.
What's the civil service commission for?
When the sheriff hires a deputy, they have to go through all the civil service testing, and that. Her code comes out of the supervisor's budget.
And has to be, it has to be budgeted, that's so much money too.
Oh yeah, we found that out.
The hard way.
Afterwards. Sometimes you just learn by doing.
Mm-hmm.
Notice I didn't say learn by your mistakes, you learn by doing.
But, you know, I mean, at least we did something.
I wouldn't have had a clue that it had to be that way, so.
Does he anticipate needing to hire another deputy that he knows of? I mean, last time we knew there was.
He's wanting to hire two more, I think.
Yes, okay, he's wanting to hire two more, I do know that, okay.
That was weird. Hey guys, when I did this, I just simply um.
I noticed. I fixed the salaries and the benefits, but I left the rest on, I figured. Figure that out.
Yeah, there was some um confusion and I do believe I've figured out where the false information came from. Regarding how to figure your reestimates, definitely had to send back. So basically, you figure your reestimate on, it's the total what you're gonna spend for the year. Someone was giving lessons on budgets incorrectly.
Not me.
No.
Kept looking at me.
It was our IT director. So Anne has had to send several of them back because evidently he's the budget, budget wizard of now.
If you got. Hey, you get another chair at your desk, or?
Oh, no. No, no. No, no. I'm good.
He's got one. Hover over her.
Okay. Okay, back on the train.
See, all along there's a line here, we could have a deputy, Jesus.
Man or equipment? Leaving a hundred dollars in there. I spent it all last year. No, I spent that at possible size last year.
Um, what's the fuel? I know last year, I feel, I, I think that you guys. Where you just wanna add the, what's the fuel for? I think that was in your reestimate, Dawn. I'm assuming that line item was because there previously was a supervisor's car, but now that there no longer is.
Yeah. If we got kind of a use-all pickup, we thought if we had to use it, pick up for any reason. Fuel for that.
That comes out of general services, that truck does.
We pay for all that fuel in general.
Speaking of that, um, we're gonna be getting county conservation's old truck. For to replace this rust bucket we have at some point in time.
Don't know anything about that.
I think it was something that Clayton talked about with Ben.
Yeah, we talked about before. If we could pick up and pick up that with it, instead of trading it in, we could get a better pickup, you know?
Right.
So zero on fuel.
Yeah.
For reestimate.
For both, yeah.
Yeah. I should say those are the opportunity. Office supplies. Twenty twenty-three, we used six hundred and fifteen dollars. Should we use one forty-three? I just left it at four hundred. We probably don't need, could probably take that down to um. Is this where cards come out of? Business cards? You'll have to order business cards.
Business cards, pens, rulers, calculators, whatever, anything like that.
You need the key, that you know, just cards is the only thing I, I got coming. I mean, I.
I'm gonna guess a couple hundred, but.
For the reestimate?
Two fifty for the estimate.
Two fifty.
Leave it at five hundred for the year, J sweet.
Okay.
Kinda have something.
Publications for the rest of the year?
But you have two different numbers for those, so your official publications and legal notices is like any resolutions, public hearings. That you need to do.
Vacancies.
What's that?
We do like vacancies.
Yep.
On boards, commissions.
And then the next line item is just strictly minutes.
I think we'd better take the publications up to like thirty-five hundred, cause we're gonna, we've got several. Commissions that we need people for.
I almost think you should go even higher because it's expensive.
Okay.
Like you originally budgeted five thousand, I don't think it's unrealistic to think we'll spend five thousand this year.
Okay.
Correct. I have a pile on my desk to be paid this next time cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
You wanna go five thousand for the reestimate?
Yep, then seven thousand for next year. Cause I gotta fill, we're gonna need a couple new ones on us. Oh, boys, too.
On the compensation board? That it, we don't normally advertise for that. That would be something that you guys would go out and recruit.
Handpick.
Handpick. But that one that I sent you guys, I think I said it last week. Basically, that's like, I can't even remember what their actual technical commission name is. But it's basically, it's like the eminent domain board. So if someone is trying to condemn some property, that's what that whole list of people are. And I don't wanna sound crude or anything, but some of those folks are very elderly, if they're even still with us, that are on that board, or on that, listed on that commission. So that's why that really needs to be gone through, and um. Basically, folks need to be contacted to see if they're still willing to serve or removed and new ones added.
I'm gonna. Do that.
Not worrying about it today.
Have to put it on an agenda, have a topic, I guess.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's touched it for about four or five years. And it's also one of those that's very rarely used, but when you need it, I mean, like, for example, if, I'm gonna say DOT comes through. And they're white, they're making twenty a six lane, and they have to condemn that property. Then the sheriff's office is the one that has to go through and serve all these notices and hold these meetings for this condemnation, if people are not willing to give up their land.
Or proceedings, just leave it as is?
Keep it at twenty?
Because it's.
The reestimate?
How, how does that affect us now? We're only paying one paper. We'd be, previously, we paid two papers. And before that was three. Now we're down to one paper.
Probably budgeted, so, maybe that's an area where you could cut that.
When did we, when did the, was that a year ago, the Winthrop paper closed? It was December thirty-first, but I can't remember if it was a year ago or.
Around a four thousand, so eight thousand. Essentially for the rest of the year.
Wait, hold on, you're doing eight thousand for what?
Ten thousand for the rest of it.
Ten thousand for the board proceedings.
I don't know, that's gonna be enough, cause we've not paid for any of the meetings that you've held in November yet.
Okay.
So, you're looking at all the meetings in November through July.
Leave it at sixteen-five?
I would.
Sixteen-five.
And then take next year to down? To sixteen-five?
Need a seventeen would be adequate, it's three thousand drop.
But, yeah, I think it could be lowered.
Take next year to seventeen then?
Yeah, seventeen sounds good.
Okay. Printing services.
I thought last year we increased it, though, for that, that house file, you know, we had to do those mailings. I think we.
And then it come out, and then it come out in the code that the auditor fell. Yeah, so it had to come out of my budget.
Yes, I think that's why you increased it.
Might as well, I did it all, so might as well come out of.
Leave a couple hundred bucks in there for next year.
Yep.
Zero this year, and then next year, you're gonna leave it at four hundred, or?
Go to two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two thousand.
Postage mailing.
That was the same thing for the increase. We did the reestimate for that five, that. Then it, our house file mailing and.
Donkey's balance stuff, we can go, what, two hundred or three hundred dollar?
Two.
In the reestimate?
For the reestimate.
Two hundred? Then three hundred for next year?
We don't have any little square properties in the world nowhere anymore.
Oh, we got a lot of them out there.
Well, there's no more little square properties.
There's little triangle.
I already got rid of that one.
We also blast B roads, level B roads, that we can give them.
Oh, abandon them?
Yeah, we bring them back to the landowners.
But there's, some of them need to be, some of them have houses on them.
Sure.
They need to be, probably taken the other direction.
Okay, reestimate postage mailing two hundred, requested five hundred, going once, going twice.
Wait, I just thought we reestimated it two and three for next year.
Is that what you're at?
Yeah. Got Anne here.
I agree.
So. Management subsistence, we're at.
We have a whole bunch of meetings and trainings coming up.
Did you, like, every other week?
Yeah. I sex one crazy.
They're trying to increase their revenue.
I would leave it as is, so.
You think seven-three will get through the rest of the year?
Look, look at your history, though.
Yeah.
Look at your history. Twenty twenty-three, you were at almost ten thousand, and the year before that, you were almost, you were at. For short of nine.
Yeah.
I would take that up to eleven, because that's just how, how much we were gonna spend this year, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then next year's, keep it eleven?
Works for me.
Cause you got January, and then you gotta get in March.
End March, two in January, one in February, and one in March. Phone? Keith, are you gonna wanna tell them?
I use my own.
Okay. Two fifty. Oh, Clayton, your hot spot, how much was that amount?
So these, I got that other one. Yeah, I think it was, it had been runs thirty-some dollars, but I don't know where, where, who it's at now.
But won't Keith just get Clayton's hotspot?
I don't need a hotspot.
You don't need a hotspot, okay.
He's got super high-speed internet in Jessup. Five brown.
I uh, see, I've used that for the laptop, but you won't be needing that.
No, no, my phone does have.
That's what I use to do my laptop. So I'll be turning that in. That device.
So the re-estimate.
So prior year you were at?
Down to two thousand. Considering he's getting rid of his hotspot.
The reestimate two thousand?
Yep. And next year, leave it at twenty-two hundred? I didn't go less than that.
Think less than that.
Go two?
Go two.
Got that two hundred dollars you're gonna save us.
Every little bit helps.
Yeah. Little dollar.
School of Instruction. I would say so. Fakka? Motor coating. Just kidding.
Okay, motor vehicle equipment maintenance.
Reestimation for the.
The question from zero?
Question be zero, yeah. Rental meetings. Are we end up doing? Town hall?
Never again.
I was thinking EMS town halls.
What's gonna, uh. With the redoing the comp plan, is there gonna be anything for that, or having to use going off to communities, or not? Probably not, that's what I'm not thinking. I just wanna make sure it.
Charge if we use the community room at the library, that's free, isn't it?
Yeah. And so far, we've been working, it's worked out well with us using Rivers Edge, and we do have the EOC for. For smaller.
So we can zero out. Rental meetings. These memberships.
Um, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we're.
How'd that get so low?
The uh, ISAC dues.
How much is ISAC? How did it go from sixteen down to five?
Reestimate all one hundred.
When we estimate it, that was like subtraction. Thinking that's all I need for the rest of the year. Um, what about Interpol? Where's that come out of?
I would have to sign complete, I mean, someone can look in their budget book.
I don't think that comes out of.
I think that comes out of non-departmental.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you taking all yours off?
Last year's.
Well, you wanna go? With the whole chair. I'll go pull this on my desktop and see what's coming out of there.
Oh, wait a minute, no, the School of Instruction and dues and memberships, is that, any of that tie in together?
Well, I'm just saying like, so.
I don't know what happened back twenty-two, twenty-three to all activity, where, where that six hundred and seven came from. I've drawn a big blank from that, where that, got that got boosted up to that amount.
Right.
What happened, did we join?
What did we unjoin?
Is that where you came up with that seventeen hundred? Cause you looked at that activity back then?
Yep. Be some help with behind access to it, so.
I'm trying to think. I mean, we've got Northeastale, RC and D, we've got Interco.
But that, that all comes out of that, additional appropriations dollars.
Yeah.
What's on there you're talking about? Sorry.
Tyler. What, they're gonna go, they're gonna look up this code, and they're gonna find out what was spent.
Previous years where it was sixteen eighty-seven. You also paid for a soil compaction study. And then that was also the mess with pulling HR. And there was a lot of ailers in Tunics bills that come out of there, because we did not have it anywhere else to pull it.
So we can reestimate that.
Five hundred, in case I second.
That soil compaction, I think that was six hundred dollars we paid towards that.
Yes.
They're wanting to do another one of those, we're gonna get billed again, so.
Estimate this to five hundred and um, five hundred for requested.
Clayton, was your, your understanding, they were gonna bill us again for that compaction survey, cause they wanted to do it again? Remember, they said they wanted.
One time, they said they were gonna take it out of the ISAC. Because there were so many counties that didn't even contribute into it. It, it was kind of a voluntary thing.
Right.
If you wanted to, or you did not want to. We volunteered, we said that we would go ahead with the six hundred dollars.
Well, if you leave it at five hundred for your requested, if they come back and it's a voluntary, say, you know, sorry, we can't, we don't have it in the budget.
Five hundred dollars to her.
Well, you're gonna spend your five hundred on your. ISAC, and so it's gonna leave you a hundred, you can give them a hundred.
Okay.
So requested at five hundred?
That's fine.
Um, oh, and then I put five hundred dollars down here to my office.
It must be over a thousand because it's a six thousand number. That line item, cause it's a six thousand number, which is considered a fixed asset, anything in that, that comes out of that line has to be over a thousand dollars.
Put it up in your office supplies. If it's only five hundred bucks, you can.
An office for.
Because when we all three sit here, and somebody comes in to visit one of us, you know what you have, then you have an open meeting file, which is, that's what you have.
Often, they're all pretty here. Really rare.
Monday morning.
Yeah, that's the only day.
Anyway, I have my office downstairs, I made myself one, with you, Spencer, and with stuff I brought from home, so.
Take it out of your, take it out of your big salary you get.
They gave you a raise. So what did we decide, zero? Or what? Said it has to be over a thousand dollars in that one?
Yeah, because it's a six thousand number.
Okay, so.
Then those aren't my roles, that's Department of Management.
There's empty spaces left downstairs, do you think, just letting you know?
Yeah, I saw it.
And I could throw this out there, if you're putting up a new office down there, which, that's not my decision. But it's really, really nice to have someone in here during the day. Because. The traffic that comes in wanting to see a board supervisor, well, when will they be in? We don't know.
That's why whenever I, whenever I do, I'm here, that door's unlocked, lights on, shades up. Because I don't know how many times I've had people, I'll be sitting here, and I'll just glance up, and they're just looking at the glass at me, and I'll just. You know, like that, they wanna come in, or help you with anything.
You're gonna have offices downstairs. Could the door down there not be locked anymore? Only because people will come in, and like, is the supervisor here? Well, we truthfully don't know if you're down there or not, so then we said, well, Don could be downstairs, but you gotta go just stand and knock at the door.
I, I think that's ridiculous, that door is locked, that door needs to be unlocked from eight to four thirty, period, that's my opinion.
I see no reason to be.
It does not, if them guys lead down there, if they think they've got something important in the I T officer, Evan, then if they leave, they lock their door.
And it's like those rooms that they have those computer pieces and stuff in, lock the door, just shut the door and lock it.
Yeah.
But you're talking about the next terminal door to the, to the old jail, basically, to your, uh, chair's office. Yeah, it doesn't sense that's locked.
I can understand the exterior door being locked, but the interior should be open.
Cause when people, if anybody wants, like, coming down to see Ashley or anything like that, they parked out here normally anyway. And if I come down the steps, and then they use that door to go down there, so. So are we gonna have that on the agenda, unlock that door next week?
If you would like it, I will put it up.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And I'm just gonna throw this out. But you know, back in the day. When H R was moving, and it was too much for employees to come into my office, cause people see them. You know what it's like now, when you have an employee go down there and have to stand right under a camera?
To knock on a door?
To knock on the door to get somebody to come in.
Back up anyway and ask us.
There's absolutely no privacy with that. So it's so contradictory, and I agree, you guys, I do think that door should be open.
Then everybody who comes in has access to Ashley or you, or, you know.
Okay, so back to the office equipment and furniture, what, or did I miss it?
They got her bat out again, beating up.
Okay, the only other thing is, and maybe you already did, Dawn, um, health insurance. Are you gonna be, Keith, would you be signing up for benefits, provided? For you, okay, just so we have it all squared away.
Oh, you'll be taking me off of that too.
Well, yeah, yeah, I know that.
I never had nothing taken out.
Okay, that's it for that one.
Memberships. Ninety dollars, we got ninety dollars, right?
Do you recall what that was? Off the top of my head, I do not.
Where did the sale of the food pantry go?
The sale of the food pantry went into non-general services, it doesn't go into the board of supervisors.
No, I was just asking.
Yeah.
I would assume that, cause we pay all the expenses out of there, so.
Okay, quick question, I know Evan wants to be, and this is your guys' decision on what you wanna do. Evan asked to be on next week, Jason asked to be on next week, and Griffin asked to be on next week. What do you want?
I have a few other peoples that I've received as well, that, I have community services, I have E M A, E nine one one, uh, I got it from D H S. Did you say public health?
Yep.
I have those as well that could be added on.
Well, we eventually gotta do them all, but we're gonna try and get them all done in December, was that, I didn't think that was the target to do.
No, we are not gonna try and get them all done in December, that's why I was just asking what you would like for next week.
Cause I know in the beginning, you said, I can do a few, a few is a few, not all.
Well, I think we had decided that we would like to do, like. The E M A, since it's governed by its own board, public health.
And the conservation.
Conservation.
Conservation's not ready yet until he meets with his board the one month soon.
But he said he could have it to me by the eighteenth then. Public health is done, their board has approved it, so they're ready, E M A's meeting this coming Friday, so they will be ready.
I know Griffin has asked me twice if she could be on for Monday.
So Griffin, E M A.
Just do those two.
Here's the biggest thing, we're not dealing, we're not dealing with. With them there, we're not, their board commission, they're not, we're not paying them or anything like that, so they're, they're limited on their. When we're looking at salaries and stuff, we're not dealing with labor union contracts.
And with those, with those budgets, including conservations, because they're governed by another board. You really don't have much say, unless you say, okay, let's cut it something, something across the board. Just lower your bottom dollar.
I would just say, let's try and bring in the ones that got their own boards and commission, that's what I like to do.
Evans is usually pretty easy too, is it straightforward?
Evan would be easy to get him done.
So you wanna, would you like to do public health?
Might as well do community services too, cause. That's pretty much a.
The only thing with Julie, she said she's meeting with the V A board on the seventeenth. So she said, in theory, it could change, but she doesn't anticipate it changing, so she sent it to me what she thinks it's gonna be.
Right. Let's hold up on hers until after we have a decision on the A S O two, because that could make a difference.
Let's do public health, E M A, E nine one one, and G I S.
Okay. Sounds good.
Evans is very simple, the other ones in all reality are pretty much done, you guys just determine if that's how much you're gonna give them. I sent you guys that email about E M A fund, I don't know, guys.
Well, we had it like.
Something's gonna have to give, or that fund's gonna be negative.
They, they're, they're gonna have to a budget amendment, cause they overspent. I'm guessing, I don't remember my exact email, but they overspent like maybe twenty thousand is what they reestimated, but then their revenue is like twenty or thirty thousand short.
The government cut the E M P J grants in half.
So then basically, they're tapping into their fund balance, like fifty thousand dollars there, just between those two things.
And that cleaning service out there, they're pricey, they just, it went up too. It just went up, all of them, yeah, it's very, very expensive.
But who else are you gonna get?
I, I don't know.
Would you put it out to bid, is there anybody that would do it?
Bid once we contacted Superior, Superior quit.
Couple of toilet brushes and say, clean your own place.
Yeah, but I hope, I think hope, meeting for us out there.
I could understand bringing in a service after meetings and things like that. But on a regular basis, that's a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer dollars being spent.
And we pay separately, we pay just for the E O C part, like, maybe seven hundred dollars a month or something, and then we pay for the public health side, maybe like. It's just a little bit less, like six hundred fifty dollars a month or something.
They have as much space.
It's close, yeah, you're just going out of my mind too here, I actually double check, we pay them.
Let me see if I can find what we've done.
They may, that's what you can do, get driving contracts.
No, and I mean, I understand where you're coming from, John, you're coming from a retail world, and in retail, we did, we did take care of our own stuff, unless you're a big department store. You know, then you had janitors and stuff that, that did it, but in an office building, in an office building setting, I have never, as a secretary or an office person, had to clean my own stuff.
We do it all the time.
I was gonna say, how does secondary rotate?
Yeah.
They do it. And very fast, which. Which county shop you walk into. Some of them are neat and tidy, some are rougher.
I could run half of our report of how much we pay them every month.
And I mean, I know like the senior center is part of one of those contracts too, but they actually serve food.
That comes out of a different line item though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, the total we pay them every month is.
And they get rent. Well, we get rent for that building.
Okay, I will send you and print you the worksheets for those three for next week.
Sound great.
G I S.
E M A, E nine one one.
Somebody that does empty our garbage and stuff like that. You know, we have, we, it's still a janitor, we have two.
But, but the dusting and that, and.
We don't do our own floors.
No.
I have nothing, I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
All right. My favor?
All right.